All right, then I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the
I put
of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And
Mottler?
Here.
Hello?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Easy?
Here.
Hammond?
Here.
All right, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, I asked for a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of a resolution to contract for individual medical services.
So moved.
Second.
The only thing is it's not an invoice from Dakota Timber under ditch board, it's a quote.
Okay, yeah, and I actually noted that on my
Okay. It says that on the new agenda too.
Okay.
Estimate, okay, great, so with those changes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Want to approve the minutes?
Second.
So motion and a second to approve the minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So let's see Rod, we've got fuel quotes.
Public.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there any visitors to be heard? No, okay.
Yeah, so you should have the fuel quote. Was two point four three nine eight for Jerry's. Diesel fuel. You do them both at same time, we have gas code too.
Yeah, I moved to approve the little bit of Jerry's service for diesel and Jerry's service for gas.
Second.
Either some motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Here's one other note, we've put an ad in the paper this week that West Main from the winery to I guess Cherry Street. We're gonna close it. We're doing some milling, supposed to start Monday, but I got backed up, did he call back?
Tuesday.
Now it's Tuesday, so we're gonna mill, we gotta mill the chip seal off. About an inch and a half we're taking off because the chip seal has come, got moisture under it, when it gets hot, you can just pick the whole thing out, there's nothing else to do, so we're gonna do a profile milling on it and then we'll pave it ourselves, put a couple inches back on it, so, but while we're milling it, we gotta keep it closed, we'll open it back up when we get done milling, we can keep a one lane road while we're paving and, you know, we'll have flaggers out there, but while we got that milling machine, we're gonna do all the way, skip the bridge course, do all the way to the, from the concrete at the state up to curb and gutter for the city, so. Hopefully that gets going next week.
Anything else?
Not for highway.
Right, it's a motion to go into ditch board.
So second.
So motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Travis?
We're in ditch board, there's two invoices from complete excavation. One was for lateral two A, they replaced a culvert, did they end up replacing the culvert or were they able to fix?
No.
Yeah.
So the, the one that is split apart, he hasn't got to that one yet.
Oh, he hasn't?
The two A one is by MX Hunt Lodge.
Oh.
And that was a concrete one, and it was real narrow, it was only like twenty eight feet.
Okay.
But I noticed on the invoices just this morning that he charges tax. Is there a tax on your?
Yeah.
So we gotta, I gotta have him give us
A new bill?
Yeah, because there should be excise tax, but not tax tax. So I, I just noticed that this morning, so.
So we should table these?
So we'll have to table until I get him.
Both of them?
And his, his dad passed away, his funeral's today, so if, you know, we'll wait till next meeting to do that, but so I get a hold of him.
I moved to table both of these invoices until next meetings.
Second, there's a motion on a second to table these invoices for the next meeting?
Yeah, I have to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was looking at you for the second. So I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor.
I heard you say second, I'm like, what's he doing? You were telling her.
She looked at me like, she's like, you need a second, I'm like, yeah.
One more second.
Yes.
All right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
So on the lateral fifty budget. So I, I don't know what the excise tax is gonna be, but I minus the tax, the culvert we put in for Todd by on that three hundred and twelve street and the one at the corner of three hundred and twelve and four fifty third, which was a forty eight by fifty that Wal Raven brought up that the sprayer dipped over in because it was so narrow. So the total of those two culverts and everything, I come up with eight thousand three hundred seventy five dollars and sixty cents.
Eight thousand three hundred and seventy five?
And sixty. So I know you said it was close, the estimate for the tree removal in lateral fifty is seventy three hundred forty six dollars and ninety five cents, and I don't think you have enough money to do everything, I had that Dakota timber clearing that did the mulching on the Clay Creek ditch. He come down, actually, we went and looked at it and then he flew his drone down it, so it's, oh, I don't know, eight thousand feet, eight thousand two hundred fifty feet, I think is what we measured, no, he's got three and a half miles.
Okay, so Rod, we had, well, the eighty three seventy five was Todd Buy's bill, right?
No, that was Todd Buy's bill and that, and the and the one on the corner. Just a second, let me find my what I do.
And we're talking about the lateral fifty.
Okay. So Todd Buy's, Todd Buy's was twenty five hundred? No. Todd Buy's was fourteen hundred forty five bucks because you'd already bought the pipe. You'd already paid for the pipe on that one.
Okay, but, okay, so that's already paid.
So I didn't add the pipe price because you'd already paid for it.
So in lateral fifty, we've got eighteen thousand one hundred fifty three dollars and sixty one cents.
Okay.
Now you've got a bill you said for eighty three seventy five?
Yep.
That's gonna be coming or whatever?
Yep, yeah, when I get the
Is there any more than that?
No, that includes the pipe that we that we put in in the corner.
And that's installed?
And it's already done, it's all done.
That's the eighty three's got that, whatever the bill.
Yep, it was twenty five, it was twenty five hundred seventy one dollar for installation.
So then, so we still have ninety seven hundred and seventy eight dollars? If, if that's, if the eighty three seventy five is all the bills that are outstanding?
Yeah, that should be it for lateral fifty, we got other spots, but not in lateral fifty.
So then we've got ninety seven hundred and I think he's, what do you put that, seventy three hundred?
Seventy three forty six.
So we'll just have to tell him to not go over eight thousand dollars or nine thousand?
No, he's, he said he'd get it done for that.
Okay. Then we might as well do it, I think.
Yes.
It's gonna get cheaper and more money will be, it's not a lot of money, but some money will be coming in in October.
Yeah, and then there's the old pipe we took out, we took to the metal place, so got a hundred forty one dollars twenty five cents put back in the account. So we just sold it and it says lateral pie, but it's supposed to be lateral fifty on the check, but.
Well, I was, I was out there by the Caperly property, I was showing my dear Sarah, she asked about where we had walked that ditch. Man, from both ways, from the bridge on the west end of that, boy, the willows are really taking over in the base, you know, there's a ton of willows that face that ditch.
That's in the Clay Yankton ditch, right?
Yeah. That's, that's hit the Caperly place and then west.
Yeah, where we walked through and flagged them all.
Right.
So are we gonna clear that out too then?
Boy, that was amazing how, how those willows have popped up, they're just thick in the base of that ditch.
Or do we spray them?
And ain't no spraying in that stretch because there's trees still there, you know, up on top, we left everything on top, so.
Where, where I could see it was west of there, you know, you may wanna take another look, but I didn't go around by the cemetery to see if it was the same.
Oh, you run by that little concrete bridge on west.
Both ways from there, it's, it's just thick with the willows, like I say, in the base of the ditch, and it's up to where they're almost, they're about as high as the base of the bridge is. So.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a look at that again.
Big change since the last time we were there.
But if we have to do anything, we need to get a hold of Mark Turner, that's he's, he's Caperly's executor.
Mark?
Turner?
Turner?
I've got his number.
Like Turner Plumbing, Turner, okay.
No, no, he's from down by El Point Burbank.
Yeah.
Down Turner's Landing.
So do I give? Was it Tyler?
Tyler Dishman with
Yeah, Dishman.
Are we, are we in agreement on cleaning, letting Dakota excavation or Dakota timber clearing to clean that?
Yeah, I think so.
I'll entertain a motion and a sound.
You may look at it to see if it's sure.
Well, well, this is on the lateral fifty.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I move it, except the second.
Right, second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Okay, I'll give him a call, see when he's when he's got time. If he's got time. But he is dry right now, he thought he could, there's Mark Christiansen dug that out quite a few years back and made a shelf on the east side, and so he's pretty sure he can just walk right along that side, it was the other side, but apparently he figured something out, so.
Yeah, maybe while he's down here, we can do like Caperly's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if he can get it, I'll go take a look, when I get done here, I'll go.
Yeah, I didn't, like I said, I didn't look at the east end of that stretch, I just looked at where the concrete.
Yeah, I haven't been back down there either since I was, since we were over there.
Yeah, I was going out to a barbecue in the neighborhood, that's where, why Sarah said, wait, let's, let's go down and look at the ditch that you were walking a couple of years ago. And I was shocked what I saw.
And then, so was it three hundred and tenth street, the one that separated? Was a hole in the road? So on, which is lateral one A, three tenth is one.
Then we must have been on three eleven.
Is a mile north of that image, yeah, would have been three eleven.
So.
No, no, three eleven goes by M eight, so you were
That one's the one that's there.
Yeah, so it's
Add in a culvert.
Oh, that's one adding a culvert on lateral one A.
Yeah, that's one that you're adding.
Yeah, so the other one.
Is two.
They're gonna dig it up, he's gonna dig it up first and see if we just put a band, put the band back on it or whatever, if the pipe is okay, other words, we won't know till he gets down there to dig it up. But we, that was a twenty four?
That was a forty, I guess I'm sure what side that was, forty eight?
It's a big one.
Really? So we might wanna make sure.
I don't know if it's forty eight, but it's
We may wanna make sure we got something on hand before he digs it up then.
Well, that road's closed anyway. You haven't been out there, have you?
Oh, that's the
So somebody cleaned their ditch out and just threw the dirt on the road.
Oh, wow.
It's, it's a dirt road, but still.
Yeah.
I mean, they just
Oh, that's
The whole road's just covered with dirt this deep. Well, that's township issue, so.
Yeah.
Wow.
So yeah, when he, when he gets back going here, you would have two other spots, he want called both, the one they added to and that, that's only two.
Yep.
So any other ones that well, that ain't a ditch thing, but that Bernard shelling, you know, on M one three thirteenth down by the creek, he wants to add on a pipe and so Jason Jaton's gonna do that too, and he just called the other day about wondering if we're gonna get to it, and I said, yeah, so if you happen to hear from him. We've been trying since the old Sily Jolly last ball to get that fixed, but there's nothing in the field but weeds now, so. Other than that, I, I think I'll take a look at the Clay Creek, no, Clay Yankton ditch. And then I could let you know next week, and maybe if Tyler is free, maybe he could play his drone down there give us a quick estimate, maybe he could kill two birds with one stone.
That'd be the best, of course, we don't meet for two weeks now. It's the twenty fourth, we'll fall back.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll take you, that'll give him time to look.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else for ditch boards?
Not to be.
Entertained motion to come out?
Move to come out of ditch board.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, we're in regular session, Betty?
Great, so we've added to the agenda a resolution authorized each year to sign, contract with
We'll move to authorize signature, I guess.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Be happy to share a little bit if you guys would like to see
Yeah.
Just the changes, so I provided you with both the twenty twenty four contract as well as the previous contract, which was for twenty twenty one through twenty, or twenty twenty two through twenty twenty four. So if you, what you've got on the new contract under the, on page one, the first whereas there's just an deletion of in magistrate courts, which just reads to appear in circuit court. The term obviously has also changed from, it's just account for the year of twenty twenty five. Under duties, we removed the paragraphs that were relevant for services that were previously being provided in regard to habeas corpus proceedings. Appeals, mental illness and involuntary alcohol and drug commitment proceedings, so that it's just, this contract just is for Mr. Clint to provide services as it relates to felony matters and juvenile and abusive neglect cases.
But if he gets assigned a case in December and it carries on the next year, he has to finish it off, right?
He does, and I there is some, we talked about that a little bit, and that's a question I think that we'll have to have, I don't know if it's necessarily pertinent, it's not pertinent to this conversation, I suppose, at least as far as whether or not what the contract says, my understanding is that if he gets appointed in December, he'll continue, but that would be, you know, in regard to, that'd fall under our current contract rather than the new one.
Right.
But yeah, so he'll continue serving as our magistrate attorney through the end of the year, and then we'll have to go to either a new contract with another firm or do the court appointments at the beginning of twenty twenty five with magistrate cases.
So how many cases does he have to carry over at this point?
Oh, I don't know, and most of what's, most of the misdemeanor cases that he would have on display right now will be resolved before December. So it's probably gonna be hard to tell, beginning of November will probably be when we're able to start seeing what that looks like.
We gotta get through D days.
Yeah.
To know what he's gonna have for November and December.
Absolutely. And you know, the, he doesn't serve the students, there's that contract USC has a contract with felt serves for a lot of the USC students, but he still does get a fair amount of them, it just kind of depends on how they come in. So that's kind of an unknown yet as to how many cases, there's gonna be a handful that he's still serving on, and from conversations I've had with him, there's also gonna be cases on this twenty twenty five year where a felony is reduced to a misdemeanor and he'll maintain that file and he'll appear in magistrate court when it gets remanded back to magistrate court, so he's not gonna just, he's going to maintain that file until the end of
Okay, go on.
Yeah, he'll maintain the file until it's through completion, so that only ever happens if there's an agreement, right, if we charge it out as a felony and for whatever reason there's mitigating factors and we decide to make a plea agreement where we're gonna reduce a charge from a felony to a misdemeanor, it's really only ever gonna come up where there's already an agreement in place, so there's only gonna be one appearance in misdemeanor court where he's going to walk in and plead in sentence and then be done with the file. So, and he said he'll maintain all of that, so that's not completely flushed out in this contract, but I trust Seth with what he's gonna do with that, so we said we don't need to get too in the weeds and details with that, he'll cover that, it'll be pretty rare.
That would be really the only ethical way to do it for him.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, you, you can't throw your client overboard halfway through something.
No, no, not that, especially at the last moment, so he'll maintain the file, so he'll run that to the end. We'll have to have, and it'd be a good conversation for him and I to have, we've started that as to kind of what he expects November and December to look like on misdemeanor files, because one of two things can happen, one is he keeps every single file until, you know, we keep appointing him up until December thirty first, or we start relinquishing him from this contract to allow him to be more successful in twenty twenty five with his other endeavors. I haven't really had that conversation straight on with him yet, but I know it's one that we're gonna have to have, I'm not sure where he wants to go with it either. But he knows that beginning of twenty twenty five is gonna be checking for him. Back to this contract, I suppose, there's only a couple other things that have changed, the compensation structure just is a lot more straightforward because it's just accounting for the year of twenty twenty five. No other changes until you get to there was a section in the old contract for office hours that was under nine, then that's just been deleted. We felt like that was probably the most appropriate way to do this, he'll still be here when he's, you know, when he's gonna be having court on Wednesdays, he'll be around the office, I also don't have any problems or concerns with him serving as clients, and so I don't think that having those office hours are super necessary, at this point, we also are gonna be in a position, once we start renovations, where his office is gonna be part of the construction, so this will also assist the county with that issue, once that comes into play, so I think it serves him well, it also serves us well. And that's about it, that, that is the only other change that has been made to the contract, so otherwise it's identical and really every other way to what we have been contracting with this firm for at least this contract is fairly identical, we've been in, you know, of course, we've had a contract with Peterson Stewart and Clint now for a long time, so. I'd entertain any questions, of course, if you have any, but that's about it, suppose under the new contract, there was one addition, under duties, which is two, on page two. And we just added a sentence, a second, the second sentence underneath just reads that misdemeanor cases are excluded from this contract, so just to give more clarity to the issue that there is no contract for misdemeanors, so.
And those will simply be court, court appointments now?
Yeah, I mean, unless we find some unless we do end up finding someone to engage with a contract for those services, what'll happen, and I had a conversation with Judge Sorensen about that recently too, where we had, at this point, the intention is to move to court appointments, is what I told her, unless we find someone to contract with. Judge Byrne holds juvenile courts on Tuesdays in Union County, and so a lot of the Union County attorneys and juvenile court oftentimes includes multiple attorneys, if it's an abuse and neglect case, you have an attorney for the child and an attorney for the parent, and parents are divorced, but both are interested, or if they were never married, could have another attorney for the other parent, and so on any given Tuesday, there could be a lot of, of the Union County attorneys tied up with juvenile court in Union County, and so Judge Sorensen recognizes that, and so she has reached out to Yankton County as well to see about Yankton attorneys. Maybe willing, maybe is the right word, because I don't think interested, but willing to come and help serve us as, as necessary or needed, so.
It's quite a drive.
It is quite a drive, and I think the next question that I need to, Ryan to work on right now is figuring out how much what mileage looks like and time looks like, I think Judge Garing presides over the First Circuit, has already made that determination, I think you can just apply for it's not mileage and time, it's one or the other, or driving to court appointments, and I need to, I need to get that squared up to ensure that we know what that looks like.
I'd rather pay mileage than their time.
Absolutely. So that's still in the works, of course, I mean, I think this gets us across the line for two thirds of what we're trying to do, and then the other third, we're still a ways away on, but you know, I, I continue to have conversations with some attorneys in the area too, and potentially have something, but I mean, that's probably too early to tell at this point, and then there's also, you know, a chance that we get into the court appointments in January, February, and we decide we wanna contract with someone down the road too, it's not like we're set with having Dakota for appointments for all of twenty twenty five.
So not that it has much to do with this contract, but our conflict contract? Does this affect that?
The conflict contract is yearly, so it'll just, my, how I foresee that going is as the conflict contract goes away and that any felony, I mean, we could theoretically try to reengage a conflict contract for just felony cases if we're not going to have a misdemeanor, if we're not gonna have a magistrate attorney that's also serving, you know, so if we were to contract with someone on a magistrate, for magistrate court, then I believe it would be wise to have a similar conflict contract that they could serve on both. Because the conflict contract right now allows the court to appoint both for felony and misdemeanor cases. But if we are going back to court appointments, then I'm not sure how much value we have in that conflict contract, because it would only be for the conflicts that Seth has on felony cases.
That's what I was wondering. And how many, you know, do we have more conflicts with magistrate court or felonies?
It's a each year is unique, I mean, so you, you're gonna get conflicts in one of two ways, one is when Seth is serving say he's the attorney of record for a victim of an alleged assault, well, then he couldn't serve at that individual's defense attorney as well because he already is the defense attorney for who is now alleged to be the victim, so those situations, he has to conflict off of, and then whenever there's a situation where, let's say, law enforcement goes in and finds drugs in a house and arrests five different individuals, he's only gonna serve as one of those individuals attorney more likely than not, and so then you're gonna be scrambling to find attorneys there, so it really just depends I don't think that on a year to year basis, it's gonna change quite a bit, you know, I haven't had, knock on wood, I haven't had like a major multiple, you know, multiple defendant case walking the door in a while, for the most part, it's been one or two people that have been involved in a situation, they're arrested, so that, you know, they're set to be appointed to one, someone else will get the second. More often it's an individual, right, more often than not, it's law enforcement arresting one individual, Seth gets appointed. Every once in a while, you have those unique situations come up.
How does that work, like in a drug bust, if there's five people in the house? But they know that this one person is the kingpin, the leader. Does Seth get them? Because they're gonna have more time?
Yeah.
Smith in court or?
I, that's a good question, I think that oftentimes you're gonna see the same charges. I do think though, if, if, let's say we charge one with distribution and others with just with simple possession, Seth's gonna be more likely to not get appointed to the, to the higher level felony. But you know, most of the time, those situations, you're gonna have the same level of offense, and so the clerk's just gonna point him to one that she recognizes he doesn't have a conflict off of, and then it's gonna have to go off of our conflict list or the others, and then theoretically, if there was more than three, then you'd have to just start going to court appointments. And that comes up every once in a while, but it's few and far between, we like to keep it that way.
Item sixteen. That's that last one about statewide.
Yes.
Defense, that's not likely to affect this at all, is it?
No, it's not.
What's the chances of that happening within a couple of years?
I haven't heard anything other than what they're doing right now with appeals.
Yeah.
And so I, I think we're a ways away, I don't think we're gonna see any movement on a statewide system of public defenders, I think Iowa has a statewide public defender office, and so if you go to work as a public defender in Iowa, you're employed by the state, and they you know, control your caseload and where you're working out of, so I think that provision really Control your caseload and where you're working out of. Um, so I I think that provision really is. Anticipating if there ever were. A similar system were to be implemented in South Dakota. We know what the state's now done with indigent defense as it relates to appeal work. I don't foresee. Certainly in twenty twenty five, but probably even in the near future, an expansion of that to serving. As full time public defender.
Yeah, I think I've read somewhere lately that. More states than not have a statewide system, don't they?
I think that is true, yeah.
I think we're kind of an exception of.
And we're we're the only state in the country that I'm aware of as well, that the accounting is on the hook for all of the uh. Uh, expenses relates to criminal defense work as well, and that's what. Small portion, you know, will now go to the state as it relates to this uh appeal system, but. I mean, I think it's fair to say that South Dakota counties are on the hook for criminal defense. At a rate that no other state is.
I think that the intention of the committee when they discuss this was um. To make this the first step toward um a comprehensive indigent defense system by the state, but they envisioned that as like a five to ten year plan.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're a ways away, and I think there's real benefit in. You know, what we're doing here and not having it in a statewide system too. I mean, there's. Benefits and detriments to to all of it, but of course, the big detriment is the cost of.
Yeah. Right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um.
Betty, I do have this for your signature.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all those negotiations.
Absolutely. Last page of the hall. Get Seth's signature today.
Right.
For carry this on.
Get him on the hook. That's right.
Um, vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything on Clay County Park?
Nothing new. Been having a lot of fun collecting uh. Collecting native seeds for uh for the Prairie Restoration Project, so had a lot of luck uh. Get gathering big groups of USD students. They've been incredibly willing to come out and tralump off to tiny little rimmed. Prairie hilltops that take all day to get to and then sit around and desks in a room just uh cleaning seeds by hand. It's it's been really.
The seed have you collected so far?
Uh, we're up to about maybe a half a bushel, but no, I just. We're we're doing pretty well, and we've got another big event coming up this next Sunday where I think we're gonna get quite a bit, so. Yeah, going out to Bill and Dottie's Ales property. They generously offered.
How many acres are you gonna cover with that?
Thirty one and a half acres. And that's really just gonna be a part of it. We've got a fair amount of money to buy seed as well, so this is really just supplementing and and basically trying to get um local ecotypes, so finding things that where we can that evolved. Very locally and and having those in the mix just for that additional benefit of of having those represented, but um the bulk of the mix is gonna be purchased, so. Yeah. Cool. But good times.
I I guess, yes, it will.
Yes.
That many acres is gonna take a lot of seed.
It's been a good educational educational experience for the students. They've all reported really enjoying it. A lot have gone to one event and then signed up to come back for more, so it's been it's been neat, so.
When when is it going to be seeded then?
Um, so we're planning a drill seeding in the spring, and my thought is that we may do a fall broadcast seeding with uh some of the materials we're collecting locally, so we'll do a like a a pre-seeding with the uh. With the the locally collected materials and then the the purchase seed going in in the in the spring most likely.
Okay.
But if you have opinions about that, bring them, and you know, we've had we've got a great group of uh of experts that know way more about it than I do that are that are working on it, so thankfully, we're not just relying on my very limited expertise in that area.
Um, I don't know. Anything on jurisdiction?
No, nothing new.
All right. And um building?
So they're the plan, they're hoping by the first of October, the building will be completely enclosed. So they'll be working. The builder just work inside then on for most of it. Um, the ten foot strip of land. We finally owned for six hours. And then turned it over to the city, so that process is done.
Nice.
Yay, Michael.
Yeah.
Huge relief.
That's nice to be done with something.
Yeah, Travis and I talked, I think we were thirteen months, but.
So much, so much for so little.
Yeah, so much for so little. That's a that's a great way to describe it.
Yep.
Yeah, well, that's good. It's behind us.
Yeah, so everything's going forward now, so.
Great. Um, any other reports? Do we need an executive session for anything? All right, any other business?
Um.